Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of Business and Funding Commission. Tuesdays, today is Tuesday, August 8, 2017. I will call the meeting to order. Uh, the floor, please.
Yes, Commissioner McInnes.
Present.
Commissioner Henderson.
Present.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Present.
And Chair.
Here. Uh, adoption of agenda. We have a very short agenda. Anybody wants to change anything or add or deduct anything from there?
I have other changes.
Okay.
Nothing.
No.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion, we adopt the agenda as is.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the motion carries. Consent calendar, we have nothing. So we can move on to the next item, the oral communication. At this time, anybody in the, the audience, if you like to say something, bring some issues before us that are not part of the agenda tonight, this is your chance. Uh, I see none. Then we move on to the written communication. And I got the Plan Bay Area 2040, Association of Bay Area Governments, uh, letter regarding their final environmental impact for Plan B Area 2040. And do you all have this, a copy of that?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I don't have that.
Okay, I will pass it around and if you want, you can make the copy for this.
You look at this, we're looking.
Copy of this. And the next one is the Bay Area Monitor, a publication of the League of Women Voters of the Bay Area. And this talks about layering landscapes with Bay Area green, green print. This will be a good informative document also, if you'd like to thumb through, take a look. And then I got one more written correspondence, which will be addressed at the time when we reach to the item. It's a pertaining to item, that's on the agenda tonight, G1. So I will put that into, into the record at that time, okay? So, next, we will move on to the new business. Uh, we have only one item tonight, which is a public hearing on 786 Humboldt Road, R1 Residential District. And this has to do with the grading review EX-3-17. And grading review for 905 cubic yards of soil export to accommodate construction of new single-family home on vacant 4,265 square foot lot with a 28% slope. Wow. Derek Wing, ICE Design Inc., applicant, and the Zhiyu Yang, I hope I, uh, your, pronounce your, your name correctly, and Feng Yi He, owners, and parcel number is 007-432-370.
I do need to recuse myself on this item because I own a rental property within 400 feet of your property.
Okay, so let the record reflect that Commissioner Cunningham is recusing herself. And with that, I want the, the staff to have a staff report for us to see what the staff has to say regarding this item.
Okay.
That's gonna be Julia, I guess, no?
That's right. Good evening, Commission. So the project request before you tonight is for approximately 905 cubic yards of soil export from the property at 786 Humboldt Road. Um, this would be to accommodate construction of a new squingle family home, just under 3,000 square feet. On the lot, it's currently vacant. Um, the property is a substandard lot in regards to lot area and lot width. Um, it has a standard depth, however, it is a lot of record and a buildable lot under the zoning ordinance. And you may recall, in 2015, approving a variance for a lot line adjustment between this property and the property to the east at 788 Humboldt Road, approving the final configuration of those lot lines. Uh, so again, this property is, um, a steeply sloped property on Humboldt Road. Here are some site photos illustrating its current state. So what you can't see in this photo is the fact that the front lot line is about seven feet beyond the curb in the photo. So approximately where the tree, um, here in the front yard begins, that's approximately where the front property line is. So as the current topography sits, it's about four to six feet above finished grade of Humboldt Road. And here are the applicant's proposed site plan, so you can see the approximate outline of the proposed home, um, as well as a new driveway. There's currently no curb cut on the site, so the applicant's plans include a new 18-foot curb cut for a driveway and would also accommodate two cars within the driveway on the property in addition to a two-car garage. And here's the applicant's grading plan. So this shows you the proposed retaining walls on the site. So most significantly is this wall right here along the eastern, in the east side setback. That's fairly long. It is also, when measured to the interior of the site, um, it would range in height, at its tallest would be about 12 feet. And again, that's measured to the interior. Measured to the adjacent property on the side, it would only be about one to two feet above grade. So it's a, it's on a cut slope. It would not be readily visible from off the site. The other retaining wall, um, that is a little bit taller on this and exposed, is the, right here in the front yard. Um, this retaining wall would be about nine feet above the finished grade of the driveway. Um, again, this would be measured to the interior of the site. When measured to the exterior of the site, the adjacent property at 770, it would not exceed, again, more than one to two feet above grade. And here are some simulations from the applicant. Um, obviously, a little bit of a, in a vacuum, but showing the proposed finishes as they are, and you can also get a much better view of that retaining wall on the east side here and in, in the front as well. So in order to recommend approval of a grading permit to the city engineer, the commission has several guidelines that it adopted in 2003. Uh, the first is that the proposed grading is minimized and designed to reflect or fit comfortably within the natural topography. So the applicant's grading plan is, limits the excavation to the footprint of the home in the driveway in order to accommodate the required onsite parking. The structure would fit in the hillside and natural contours would be maintained to the sides and rear lot lines. Uh, the second guideline is that the proposed grading is designed to avoid large exposed retaining walls. So as I just detailed, there are two walls that would exceed six feet in exposed height from adjacent grade in the east side and front, um, western setbacks. Um, again, these are tallest, meant, when measured from grade at the interior of the site. Um, when measured to the grade immediately adjacent to the subject properties, they would not exceed more than one or two feet in height. Um, because though the interior of the site, uh, when viewed from the interior of the site, it would exceed six feet, we are recommending that screening plantings be planted over those walls, um, just to provide some aesthetic softening of them. Uh, the third guideline is that the grading is designed to conserve existing street trees or protected trees as defined in Title 12 of the municipal code. So the plans do, uh, propose removal of a bay tree, and I'll go back to the photos. So it's this tree here. Um, this particular tree is located, let's find it, okay. As you can see on the grading plan, this is the location of the tree. Given the required setbacks for this property, as well as the requirement to have off-site parking off of the public right-of-way, the location of this tree, there, there's no feasible way that we can see that the tree could be retained. Um, so as a condition of approval, we are going to require that a replacement tree be planted on the site, um, that this be dealt with prior to building permit issuance and a final conceptual landscaping plan that, um, as a standard to require, uh, prior to building permit issuance, and that would be subject to the Community Development Director's approval as to the species, location, um, height, our maximum height and that sort of thing. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the commission adopt the draft resolution that would recommend approval of the grading permit to the city engineer, uh, subject to the findings and conditions contained in Exhibit A to the reso. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Oh, and I, actually, before I finish, I should note, as the chairperson indicated, we received a letter from, um, the neighbor at 790 Humboldt Road, which you have up at the dais, and he was sharing some concerns with the geotechnical work, um, and analysis when the actual construction begins. So of course, the city engineer has, has the authority to review the geotechnical design, uh, geotechnical report will be required prior to building permit, subject to the city engineer's review, um, and that will be within the world of the many things that the city engineer considers, uh, when they apply for their grading permit and building permit. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Any questions? We'll start with Commissioner McInnes.
Thank you. I had a question regarding the rather large 47-inch diameter tree on the adjacent lot at 770. I did visit the site. In all of the, um, attachments we were given, including A1.1, there's nothing in any side elevation renderings that indicates where the canopy of that tree would intersect the new building. So where is the canopy relative to the height of the building? Because it, it appears to be adjacent to the rear, somewhere between the second and third levels. And additionally, by way of the floor plan, the property line is right next to that trunk. So you're removing all of that hillside material, and I have the concern again about the disruption of the roots to a mature tree. Was the adjacent property owner contacted? There's nothing in the plans that indicated removal of that tree, and I think an arborist should be consulted to ensure the property owner next door that that tree will not suffer in early demise.
Yeah, no, thank you for bringing that up. So as you can see, the applicant's design, which is showing here in the photo, so. Um, at that side of the property, the exposed building walls above grade would not exceed, I think at that point, it's about 17 or 18 feet from the adjacent point of grade. Um, so assuming that that mature tree is, has a canopy that exceeds that height, um, I would anticipate a conflict with the canopy. Um, however, it's a legitimate concern, obviously, when we, and we've had at other sites concerns with adjacent mature trees in terms of the, how much of the root, um, zone is going to be impacted by a grading or retaining wall. So I think that's a, a valid point for, um, in the condition of approval to have, when the arborist prepares the report, to specifically take a look at any adjacent trees, um, in the vicinity of the construction to ensure that it would not impact the health of trees off the site.
Thank you.
Good point. Commissioner Anderson?
Uh, yes, in addition to the tree to be removed at the front of the property, the plans also show approximately three trees near the rear of the property that are also going to be removed, and those are smaller. And I was just wondering if there was any requirement to replant for those, and if not, is it because they're not a protected species or because they're smaller? Or just what's the story on those?
Yes, so the plan identifies, I believe it's two fruit trees to be removed. Um, they are not either protected by their species or by their number or trunk circumference. So yes, to, our code does not require that those trees be replaced. If, again, with the replacement tree, there is a tree shown in this simulation that I will note, it's not shown on the landscape plan, um, but you, it could be a recommendation that you make as well to have, um, an additional tree to be incorporated into the landscape plan if that's something you're interested in.
Well, I'm always interested in, in tree replacement, but, um, you know, building codes and et cetera. Um, the other question I had is the letter from the owner of 790 Humboldt Road mentioned some excavation described as a hole, and I was wondering if staff is aware of that, that hole and its, its current status? Is it currently eroding or has it been remediated or what's happening with it?
It, by the letter that we received, by a gentleman who's lived there for many decades, I understand, and by my own experience walking by the site fairly often, it looks to me like the hole has been there for quite a while. Um, it is not shown in the photo that I took, unfortunately, but we could pull up Google or if you want to see it. Um, it looks to be like the beginnings of someone who may have been wanting to provide some off-street parking. Um, there's no retaining wall. Um, it's not especially steep. Um, should I pull up a Google map? Are you interested in seeing it on Google Street View?
If that's easy for you to bring up, it would be nice.
Um, but I think, you know, that, that, just, I mean, just for clarity, it is on the adjacent property, 788 Humboldt. It's not on the subject property.
So it is on the property that is going to be graded?
No.
Next.
Oh.
The subject property that you're looking at tonight is 786 Humboldt.
786.
So the gentleman at 790 is just concerned with grading occurring at 786 having an impact on the entire hillside. The particular hole that he's referencing is not actually on the property that you're looking at tonight.
So is it two houses down on, on the other side of, wait, I'm sorry, which?
There's two lots, Greg. There's two lots, two vacant lots. One is the one you're looking at tonight, that's the most westerly lot.
Oh, I see. I see. So there's the lot in the plan, then an empty lot, and then 790? I see, I understand the.
Yeah.
The map now.
Is that clear now?
I understand.
Okay.
So, so the hole is on the.
The hole is on the adjacent vacant property that's not being, being considered tonight.
At this point in time, okay. Um, and is that empty lot owned by yet another party or is it also owned by?
It's owned separately, yes.
788, okay.
It's owned separately.
And is the owner of that lot aware of these plans? I imagine he was noticed.
Um, yes, so we notice within 300 feet of the subject property to all record property owners per the county assessor.
Um, this letter also refers to street widening, but I don't see a lot of street widening going on. Is there any more than just for the driveway cutout or what's being done with the road?
The street widening, um, at this point, the city engineer did not require the applicant to fully plan out the street widening that would be required prior to your review. Sometimes he does, uh, before you see it. In this instance, he hasn't. I know that the applicant has had discussions with the city engineer, and what they're showing in the plans, which I haven't put into the slide, but they are, um, in the civil plans included in the full packet, show the road widening to include mostly curb cut, um, as well as some actual expansion of the travel roadway.
I see, so this diagonal thing on the far side of the road is also part of the street widening, where it says 25.0 part? Do you see where I mean? There, there's a 25.0 measurement there, and part of that is on the side of the street of the property being improved, and part of that is on the other side. So is, is the road potentially going to be widened on both sides to get it to 25 feet or is that existing on the far side?
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay. Um, so no, the, what you're referring to, which is on Sheet A1.1, um, it's showing a expansion occurring directly opposite of this property, so on the northern side of Humboldt, which actually also is a vacant property. Um, they're, they're showing some road widening on that side of the road as well. And again, the city engineer will work with the applicant during the building permit and grading permit process to finalize what's actually going to be occurring there, um, based on the fact that they've had discussions up to this point. Um, I'm believing that this probably reflects the conversations they've had. Um, but until they actually get to the building and grading permit point, um, the city engineer reserves full authority to determine what he's going to actually require.
Right, and I imagine that would be within the city's right-of-way?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Any street widening is within the recorded right-of-way boundaries.
And the, the owner of 790 also requested that the street widening be done first, and I'm wondering if that's, is it typical for the staff, the planning department to require the road widening to be done at any specific part, phase of the project?
Our department does not. What you often see in a grading review before you, like, for example, the last one you looked at, which was on Tolari. Um, in that case, the city engineer will specifically impose a, recommend a condition of approval that prior to any site construction occurring, they have to provide a staging area first, as a first step, um, to get all the equipment and all the other, you know, construction, um, stuff off of the road. So in this case, where they would have to dig out a portion of the property to actually get the construction equipment off the road, um, that, that's almost always, in my experience, required by the city engineer. He did not specifically require it as a condition in this case. Um, I'm assuming he will apply it here. Um, you can always add that as well into your recommendation in the resolution.
Mm-hmm. Um, and furthermore, I would imagine that if a grading project were approved and a tree started tipping or a hill started collapsing, that that would be addressed?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, the point of the geotechnical engineering, of course, prior to building permit issuance, when they're designing the retaining walls and, you know, having a construction management plan be created is to avoid any sort of hillside destabilization, that sort of thing. So when we get a soils report and a geotech report, those are the type of issues and concerns that would be addressed.
And did I read this correctly, that there are no variances? Is this all conforming? Is that right?
That's correct. The plans we've received, um, for review that are attached to your, um, staff report comply with the floor area ratio, lot coverage, height, all of the development regulations of the R1 district. So your review is just for the grading component.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, some very good questions. And, uh, I have one question only regarding the widening of the road. Uh, normally, the road width required is 20 feet, and here you have 25 feet. And this additional five feet is for the off, is for the parking or what?
Um, so as I stated, the road widening that's reflected in this, um, site plan is not, to my knowledge, what the city engineer has actually formally authorized. Um, it may reflect our conversations to date, but the, it's, it, you are not, the roadway widening shown here is not by any means a final, um, proposal.
Yeah, 'cause I was just wondering whether it's for the additional parking or what?
There's more than five feet required for an onsite parking space, so I'm, I'm really, I'm not sure. Um, I believe that the, um, well, we have the geotech engineer here, I'm not sure how involved he was with.
The civil engineer.
Or civil, I'm sorry. Civil engineer, did you work?
Uh, Mark Burns.
Yeah, you might want to ask him.
I will get a chance in a minute.
Yeah, you might want to ask him if he has more information, how they diagrammed that.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I do have one more.
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, I just zoomed in on the map that I looked at before, and I, I noticed something I didn't notice before, on the aerial photograph, um, it's just this, G17, Lot 788 shows a structure. Has that been found?
Yeah, so that aerial is from, I think, 2015. So there was originally a structure on one of the lots, it's since been demolished.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions before we open the public hearings? We're gonna open the public hearing now, and we like to hear from the applicant first. So who wants to come before us? The city engineer or architect or owner?
Uh, yes, Mark Burns, uh, the civil engineer responsible for the grading and stormwater drainage plans on this, uh, project. From what you guys discussed already, um, I don't have any large concerns regarding any of the, you know, the questions pertinent to the grading and the roadway widening, um, as well as the, um, the letter that was discussed from the neighbor at 790. Having done the site visit and in preparation for these plans, everything, um, is in conformance with the applicable codes and regulations, CBC and, uh, the local regulations as well as they apply. Um, and I really don't have anything else to, to comment on unless you guys have specific questions.
Any questions for the civil engineer here? I have a question regarding the, that big hole on the next, uh, property. How far is it from the place where you will be doing the grading?
It is, so it is on the adjacent property. Um, the property width of that, that middle property, I believe it's 788, is that correct? So 788, that property that is vacant and will remain vacant, is, I don't have an exact dimension, but it's approximately 35 feet, and that hole is, um, within that zone. I don't have a, an approximate, um, diameter of that hole, but I do have, if you're interested, I actually do have a photo of showing where 788 abuts against 790, if you want to take a look.
Yeah.
That photo was taken, I believe, last October. Um, so you can see where that, the property owner of 790, where the grade kind of smoothes out once you get above that little, that little lip coming up from the curve. So it's not, I, I would say it's not so much a hole as it is more of a flattened, level area.
Yeah, 'cause the reason I ask you this question is, when you're gonna do the grading, and if that hole, and I don't know how, how deep that hole is, is gonna be close proximity, then you can have, due to the vibration, you can have some problems, sloughing and all that, which is the one that, he brought it up. So that's, so that's why I'm asking you this question.
Gotcha. Yeah, with the grade as it is, I don't see any concern with your standard construction.
The distance will be important. If you are very close to it, then you may have problem. If you are very far, don't have to worry about. Okay, yeah, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Anyone else from the applicant want to come before us? No? Anyone from the audience, anybody wants to? I see none, so we make a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, discussion, anything, uh, the commissioner's going to bring it up, uh?
So I'd just like to have a general discussion about, you know, what a typical advisory remediation should be like, you know, supposing they are jackhammering and they're using excavation equipment, and if you go to 788, you see sand and dirt is rolling down the hillside, and the retaining wall doesn't seem to be collapsing, is that something that the owner of 790 may be concerned about and the owner of 786 may or may not think is significant? So, you know, what, how do we, it'd be intermediates between these three parties?
I think a lot of this is in the purview of a city engineer, actually, but what we can suggest is that, uh, the grading operation should be coordinated with the adjacent property and also the vacant lot where that, that hole is. So, so that they are aware of what's going on, because it's gonna be a pretty deep excavation, actually, for the retaining wall. It's a pretty, pretty tall retaining wall, so you're talking about, uh, what is the estimated depth you're gonna go for the retaining wall foundation? If you can approach the mic to.
Go closer, my dear.
Yes, for the retaining wall excavation, you'd be looking somewhere in the range of 12 to 15 feet. Uh, it could depend also if the geotechnical engineer requires any sort of overexcavation, depending on the material that's there. Uh, they're likely going to be on bedrock, though, so I doubt they'd have any overexcavation.
Yeah, so it's quite a bit of digging, so what we can. Yeah, so it's quite a bit of digging, so what we can do is put it in a condition, maybe that they should work with the adjacent properties to, during the grading period, to make sure that any of the, you know, soils or, or the rocks, or anything coming down the next door neighbors should be properly notified and contained. So, there should be some kind of a containment, so that it doesn't go into the adjacent properties. So, normally, they put the hay bales and all that to prevent the sloughing of that in the, so probably, that probably will be the one required here, too.
So, you'd recommend some sort of temporary structure or object to, to hold the slope down, and then remove it when?
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Did you get that, so that you can put that in your recommendation?
Right, so I have that we would add a condition that during construction, the applicant and their geotech work with the adjacent properties to observe and notify any potential impacts to slopes on adjacent properties during grading. And may I suggest, too, it seems like you may, we just want to focus your recommendation as to appropriate erosion control measures?
Yes.
Which are all addressed, again, through the grading permit. So, perhaps we might rephrase that condition to say, we recommend that the city engineer ensure that the erosion control measures accommodate any potential off-site soil movement or sloughing.
Yes, perfect.
Okay.
You agree with that recommendation, commissioners? Any, anything else you want to add to this?
If I may address you. I understand that it's a narrow lot. I understand the need to accommodate all the parking and have the two exterior parking spaces, but having visited the site, as you drive down Humboldt, there's a lot of greenery, and one of these trees in front is being removed. And what I'm seeing on the plan is a lot of concrete. And I would strongly suggest, I know there's a landscaping plan needs to be submitted, that the property owners consider something to soften the frontage. Look at the rest of the street, there are some wonderful properties that have softened the exterior in the front without obstructing their views, just by use of some, actually, a lot of them were native grasses, where they just minimize the impact of looking at concrete and concrete, because this is a fairly large driveway. And I think that the neighbors would appreciate that. And because we're dealing with a lot of warmer temperatures, when you put that much concrete in an area, it's going to significantly affect the temperature up there, because it had that whole greenery.
Yeah, that's very true, yeah. Is this project going to come before us for the design review, or not? No?
No design reviews required.
So, this is the only opportunity we have, so any other comments you have regarding the building itself? This is the chance to put it in, in the recommendation, even though it's only for grading, but...
Yeah, I would like to add to what Commissioner Mackin said about the driveway. You know, I've seen some really interesting permeable driveway designs, where you can have a mixture of concrete and green, or a mixture of something else, and, you know, perhaps we could put that in as an advisory measure for investigation to soften the front, since there is a large percentage of the, the frontage right now with, is going to, to be paved. It would be nice to soften that.
Yeah, through the chair, if I could just address, so we do have our requirements for stormwater treatment, which this project is considered a small project, so they would have to incorporate at least one site design measure that could include permeable paving. Also includes things like directing your runoff from your, from the structure into landscaped areas, that sort of thing. So, they will be required, again, to demonstrate, when their building permit comes in, that they're incorporating at least one of those measures. So, if you want to make an advisory comment that whether you would prefer additional landscaping beyond the minimum required, or that permeable pavers be made, you could make that comment. It is up to the applicant's choice. We don't, the code doesn't allow us necessarily to tell them what to do, but you can make a recommendation.
Yeah, that's all I was looking for. And along those same lines, since they are removing a number of trees in the back, my personal aesthetic is if I ever have to remove a tree from my own property, I always try to replace with two, because trees are very important. But I understand that's outside of code, so it's just a recommendation that I would like to...
Could I note, though, for a protected tree, we, you could require beyond a one-to-one replacement, that we have, I think, in the past, required a one-to-two.
Yes.
The conditions that you see at the site.
Yeah, I would be inclined to do that for the protected tree, if the other commissioners are in agreement, and I would like to advise for the non-protected tree that they replace with a one or a two-to-one on or off the property, as, as feasible.
So, the way that might be handled is to have essentially at least one replacement onsite, and a second onsite, or to, at, at their option, to do an in-lue fee that would go to a fund that the city would place a tree.
Yeah, that would work.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, that's fine.
I agree.
Anything else, though? Okay, so are we ready to go ahead, and...
I'd just like to reiterate that we should address all, or be sure that all of these concerns of 790 Humboldt Road be entered into the record, as I'm sure it, it will be. It does sound, from the, the sounds of it, that all of these things are something that is an ordinary part of a grading review, but I just wanted to make sure that the owner, who wrote this letter, feels heard.
Yep, very good. Julia, would you be kind enough to read what additional recommendations we put in?
Well, actually, so the one that Commissioner Mackin had brought up, I don't believe you guys had a consensus on that, so she had suggested that the arborist report that submitted for the building permit also specifically look at the large tree at 770 Humboldt. So, if you guys want to maybe talk about that and make sure you're all on board with that, too?
Oh, yeah, I forgot to mention that, I strongly agree with her comment.
Me, too.
Oh, wonderful. And could we make sure that it's not just about root incursion?
Right.
But also the canopy? Because you feasibly could see a new property owner trimming all those branches off, which is on a mature tree, that could probably kill it.
Sure. Well, and of course, when a tree's on, well, right, so, yeah, so canopy as well. Okay, so that is one condition, the other condition being that you recommend the city engineer ensure that the erosion control plan reflects the potential impacts and sloughing to soils on adjacent sites. There is another suggestion that the property owners consider softening the frontage and minimizing impermeable surfaces when they comply with their stormwater checklist. Their suggestion to replace the protected tree either at a one-to-two ratio, or replace the tree with one tree, and require additional in-lue payment fee for a, a tree elsewhere.
Does it include everything that you suggested?
Yes, except I'd also like to put in, just as an advisory, to also consider replacement for the trees in the back that are not required to be replaced.
Okay, anything else? Okay.
Well, I, I have another question about the canopy. Typically, I mean, at least for small trees, tell me if I'm wrong on this, small branches that cross a property line, typically, the owner of the property line can take those all off. Is that different for a large tree, or how would that be managed if we wanted to make an advisory that the, the large tree canopy be preserved over the property line?
I think from a legal standpoint, there are neighbor laws that, you know, would say if a portion of a tree is impinging on your own property, I'm certainly not a legal expert in that, but I, I believe that you are allowed to trim. I don't believe that, you know, when it comes to actually impacting the long-term health and survival of a tree, I think that is a bit of a different matter. So, again, I think having the arborist specifically look at that mature tree in relation to the applicant's actual design, they would be able to determine, one, whether the root zone would be impacted by the retaining walls and foundation, and, two, whether the structure as currently designed would still be under the existing canopy of that tree. So, it's something that can be looked into. The result of that, I think, would determine the path forward in terms of negotiations with the property owner next door, that, that it all really needs to be looked at carefully by an arborist before we know what's going to happen.
Okay.
Okay, so how are we going to put this in the condition, though?
I think the recommendation, as Commissioner Mackin stated it, that an arborist include in their analysis in their arborist report whether the project as designed would have an impact to the root zone or tree canopy, would take care of that in terms of getting an answer.
Thank you very much. So, this letter that we got from 790 Humboldt Road, Wayne Hendricks, would it be possible to let him know what, how he maybe respond to his letter indicating that this is what we recommend in our final resolution?
Yes, I can update him, yes, in writing.
Okay, because that way he knows that we, we heard his, his concerns, okay? With that, we have, we reached the recommendation to the city engineer about issuing the grading permit EX, EX-3-17, via adoption of resolution EX-317 with Exhibit A, which will contain the conditions and findings, plus the, the additional conditions that we, that the, the commission has recommended.
As soon as someone makes that motion.
Right. So, do you have a motion to go ahead and approve the resolution EX-3-17?
I'd make a motion that we approve resolution EX-3-17, approving the, conditionally approving the grading for a new single-family home at 786 Humboldt Road.
With the modification.
With the modification.
With additional conditions and modifications, okay?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And for those of you who have any concerns, or they want to file the appeal, we have an appeals process, which I will read it to you. It says, "Anyone may appeal the action of the Planning Commission to the City Council, except where specified otherwise. Appeals shall be filed with the city clerk, not less than 15 calendar days following the Planning Commission's decision. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal, and for additional information, please contact the city clerk at 415-508-2110." Thank you very much, and you are done with your grading permit. Good luck. Can we move on to the next item, which is...
I think we need to call Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes, yes. We forgot about her.
Never.
Never. Thank you very much, guys. Welcome back. Okay, now we on to item number H, items initiated by the staff. Anything, Ken?
So, Julia has been the lead on this, but council introduced the cannabis ordinance, and that will go back before them on September 2nd. Commissioner interviews are, are still not yet set, so that's all, all staff has at this time.
For the planning commissioners?
Right, for the...
How many applicants are there, do you know?
I do not, have you heard?
There were three last time we were updated, but I believe that was before the final period closed, so, at least three.
At least three, okay. So, we don't know the date yet, when it's going to be, so. Any other questions for the staff? None? Okay, how about the commissioners? Anything you want to bring it up?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Actually, I just want to share this one more time. I'm very excited about it, and I know Colleen is very excited about it. There was some news today that Colleen brought to me, local news from the San Jose Mercury News, on "Hope on Wheels." It's Section B 111, I'm sure we can find it online. "Hope on Wheels: Driverless Shuttle Offers Freedom to Those Who Don't Drive Anymore." I know we're going to schedule a conversation about that sometime in the future, but it's really nice to see this coming up and becoming a reality, and I, I think, you know, we, we need to get this out to the public in Brisbane, and just to get people on board before we even discuss it, so they get it, you know? Because I still talk to a lot of people who think there's a problem, and these are solutions. These are really great solutions, so.
Is it possible to make a copy of this?
I, I think we can probably find it online, I would assume.
To, to be green, yes, we could find a, a link online, and I could email it.
I will find that and send it to you.
Or Karen could email it to me, and all...
And the other thing, may I suggest that maybe we can put that in luminary also, some things about this particular article?
That's got nothing to do with the city, though.
No, but a lot of people do listen, read the luminary.
If you send us that link, we can mention it to the city manager's office, and see if that might be something they want to...
Because everybody gets luminary, and probably that, you can, you know...
Well, luminary actually is, sorry, that's...
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber.
Yeah.
Is that what you're thinking?
The star.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that it...
The star goes to every Brisbane.
Star, yeah, okay.
Right.
Who can, star also has good, good choice, both.
So, that, so thanks for bringing that, Colleen.
Okay.
May I add one thing to what you said?
Yeah.
In, in everyone's consideration of that in Brisbane and the appeal, it has an economic benefit, can bring people from all of our outlying areas into town, use our businesses and services. Additionally, it is a small step in favor of traffic congestion, getting people to public transit, because I had a conversation with Ken about Samtrans, which is not always reliable, and it's tough to get to Caltrain and Bart.
Yep.
At different times of day, but this could circulate some shuttle in Brisbane every 30 minutes.
Yeah, I think it's, this got a lot of benefits and a lot, and a lot of potential, so I'm fully...
Well, and not, not only that, I, I mean, it can be used, I know some people don't like Lyft, and I certainly don't like Uber, but, you know, like Lyft, calling a Lyft car, you could just, you call the shuttle, and it just...
Comes to you, pick you up.
For free. Great for our seniors down here, great for people who live up the hill and can't walk up there. I, I think these things can go up hills, right?
I have read that some of them, depending on how they're designed, they can.
Yeah, okay.
And some of them run on GPS, they don't even need a predetermined track.
Now, that's very good.
Yeah, isn't it cool?
I think, I hope that we can somehow convince the city council to, to look into this.
Sure.
And a very exciting project for all of us. Anything else from the commissioners? Okay. I, I'd like to thank the commissioners and, and the staff during the last two meetings. I was suffering from really bad aftereffect of the cold medicines or whatever I took, and I really appreciate for your consideration, and thank you very much for putting up with me for those two meetings. And with that, we go to the next item, which is the adjournment of the regular meeting of August 22nd, 2017, at 7:30 PM. Who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of August 22nd, 2017, at 7:30 PM.
Commissioner Cunningham made the motion, and Commissioner Anderson seconded it.
I'll second it. Yeah, another Tuesday.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we'll see you on August 22nd, 22nd, 2017, at 7:30 PM.